Welcome to the Town of Gibson planning board meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And please start by joining me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as all.
Finally, it's in cold weather, weather. Think everybody's gonna wear more sweaters this year with the price of heating oil. Anyway, let's get up to the first one, this all-space self-storage facility. Ken, are we still doing that today?
Yes, we are.
All right.
Evening, everyone. There's a weird echo, but I hear you. Hopefully, everything is all right. I'm gonna present my screen if that's all right.
Yep, go ahead. Got quite a few changes that happened, so. If you can explain that would be great.
You guys can see my screen correct?
Yes, good to go.
As you know, when we came before you before, this is for a zone change and an expansion to the existing facility. Currently in the R M zone and the other half of the site is in the I L. We're looking to. Zone change to move to. A plan that we came in before you several months ago had multiple buildings and we went back to the drawing board, worked with Carol and Andy, came up with a new plan, which. Pretty much the same building layout. The thing that changed from the last submission was our stormwater management practices and treatment. It had to do with the fact that when we went out there and took some of Carol's comments about actually draining the wetland area as well as. Same soil conditions and we thought that it would be more appropriate to go to a stormwater management practice that's above-ground area that would be advised for above-ground. There it here and this area over here. Does require the redo or removal and reinstallation of the areas down that was approved previously by Bill U to add stormwater treatment there in an area that currently does have stormwater chambers. We know Andy's got some comments about adding some more drainage to help control all the road. We're totally agreeable and understand that entirely. Of what we're doing with these two ponds is one is exposing some groundwater in the one pond here and help really introduce water back into the system rather than operation and avoid it and potentially draining it. He and Carol separately. Their comments. One of the things that we're looking to do is meet all the water quality requirements that are. Are gonna try and do a little more. And some of that.
Ken, you're breaking up a little bit. I don't know if it's. That's just your microphone or if it has something to do with our connection, but. Let's see, Lisa's saying that she can hear you well, that she texted me, but yeah. Could be just a pause or something, but.
I, Ken is breaking up a bit, but he's much louder than the meeting room. I can barely hear the meeting room, but I can hear Ken fine and volume-wise.
You can't hear, can you hear me in the meeting room or is it just one of the microphones?
It's better now, slightly louder.
Okay. Right, we'll work on that. Ken, just try getting closer to your microphone.
I'm not sure it's the microphone. It might be the Internet itself, so I apologize.
Okay, you're good now.
So hopefully it'll stay with me. Intent of what we're trying to do is create a better stormwater area and management system that helps complement the wetland area and facilitate additional work in the wetland. I did talk to Carol a little bit today and we are talking about doing some additional enhancements to that. What we're talking about is the majority of this wetland is a fragmites wetland, a good chunk of it. And we're going to explore with Carol and professionals that deal with fragmites, how we can help restore it to a better situation, what it is now and regain some functionality to the wetlands. From when we came in in July, we had about thirteen thousand square feet of buffer impact and with the new stormwater treatment areas, we're about twenty thousand. So it isn't a substantial increase, but it is a complete change in the methodology to which we were treating the stormwater. And we tried to go over that a little bit with Andy and Carol. In the original submission, but where we went and why we went the direction we did. I'm just gonna continue through. We did work with the landscaping and one of the things that you will note, we did reduce some of the height of the trees and there was a purpose in that in through discussions with the landscape architect a little further, the the tree is, the bigger the root ball. And on the steeper slopes and on the edges of the slopes, especially when you look at along grand and again along the rail trail area. If a two-on-one slope and trying to plant on that, when you have a six or eight-foot tree, the root ball gets really large and then either has to be stuck in the ground on one side overly and sticks out of the ground on the other side. With the smaller root ball, it fits better within the landscape and allows the tree to establish itself faster and grow quicker than actually starting with a longer, a larger tree and go from there. So there was a methodology to the madness of dropping some of that tree size. Along. L road cross-section, one of the things that is not noted in our plans, and we cut an extra section here, you'll see it as D D. That is not noted on plans is the existing trees that are right along the property line. There's some photographs in a minute, but there's a substantial length or growth of trees that are all along that stone wall that are on our property that will remain. They're well over forty feet tall. I've only shown them here in our scale at twenty. We. Discussion in a hundred percent agree that the profile of the tree at a mature height was inaccurate to what was being planted. So I've adjusted those on these profiles here. But we did add a second profile because this small section, the grades drop off as it goes towards the wetland and you can see on the top section here. Comes fairly even with. Graves flat up towards the neighboring property where and the trees don't quite get to the top of the height of the building, but as you move just a few feet to the what would be top of Page or West, the grade jumps up quite a bit and then the four or five-foot trees cover the building entirely, notwithstanding the existing trees that are there. Or. Just a couple pictures from Google as to the trees along the property line. The left is more of a three-D rendering from Google Earth. The right is a street view and as you can see from both of them, there's a substantial amount of them and substantial height. So we thought the. Addition of deciduous conifer trees lower in the back will guarantee that there's always a blocking because the height and thickness of the deciduous trees and the branches at the upper window areas are pretty substantial, so that'll remain. The other thing that this project does, the way it's laid out, is allows us to keep from the property line almost sixty-seven to eighty feet, sixty-seven to seventy feet, excuse me. Area that's gonna remain untouched. So it's currently kind of scrub brush and overgrown now, but it'll be allowed to grow in over time and become more of a mature forest as it would unmaintained. So switching over to cross-section B, which is the rail trail side building V, as we established here and talked about, again, this doesn't show the existing vegetation along the rail trail and up, but meteor topographically, the rail trail sits quite a bit lower than the actual property in elevation. And with the height of the trees in there proposed, we believe that those would adequately, again, screen those, that view in any way. Switching over to North Grand, we did add the cross-section as requested off the back of the building. This was limited to one row of trees. We did change it to an eastern cedar from an arborvitae for a couple of reasons. One, arborvitae tend to be deer. Second reason is. Earlier tree, the eastern cedar. We went to single row again on the slope and we tried to avoid taking out the trees that you see here. So any more vegetation by staggering a row would require going in towards the property line and removing existing vegetation in an area that is pretty built up along the property in both of these cross-sections, as you can see. We tried to minimize the impact by using what is there now, the natural landscape, rather than trying to supplement the landscape to just put in new landscape. And a three-D kind of view, a little harder to see, but you can see the houses on the left and the trees on the right about.
Nope, there you go.
About where my cursor is and here is where the driveway would be. It is not aligned with the houses. So the removal of some of those trees to allow the fire access drive would not, we believe. Did this full sweep, E A F. We know there's some comments to both of those in there. We'll work through those. But we wanted to kind of get the board's take on both our changes to stormwater as well as our.
Oh, you cut out again. All right, thanks, Ken. Yeah, a lot of those trees that you were pointing out, the existing are deciduous, I believe, so it's good to plant the conifers. All right, go to Eric for.
Sure.
The department's recommendation.
The, this application is on, as the board's noted, for a seeker review and a recommendation to the town board of proposed rezoning as well as for the site plan and special use permit for the self-storage expansion. The project, as Ken noted, has been redesigned and the stormwater has, the changes in the stormwater have resulted in some substantial changes to the wetland buffer and wetland disturbances and mitigation areas, which Aspen will review. And then the engineer also had some fairly substantial comments regarding stormwater, including its functionality. If it proceeds as planned, at a minimum, it will require a new public hearing for an aquatic resource permit, which based on previous discussions would not be required and the numbers now show that it would be required. So when they return that, if that remains the same, that'll lead to a public hearing. And then the board, we're recommending the board discuss the North Grand Avenue setbacks and screening that you would like compared to the hundred-foot guideline for the district. And between residential and commercial. And that you consider. Oh, we asked that the applicant prepare an environmental assessment form, parts two and three. There's enough of a range of potential impacts. It seems appropriate to at least document how they're proposing to deal with them so it helps the board arrive at a secret determination. And consider asking the department, the applicant, meet with departments before the next semi-final in order to work out the interlocking wetland and stormwater and screening and site plan issues.
Yeah, that may be a good idea, Ken, to meet with the department offline because of the significant changes in stormwater. But we'll go around and see how, whatever it feels. Let's see, Andy, are you on? The call here? I see you're muted. Andy Larn? Come in, Andy Larn?
I'm here, I'm here, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. Wouldn't unmute. I got it now. So yeah, actually Ken and Carol and I, we actually met briefly the other day to talk through some of the wetland and stormwater concerns that we had. I think, I mean, I won't speak for Carol, but I got a sense that we, I think we have a path forward to address some of those issues. I think Ken talked about it a little bit. And I'll let Carol talk about the wetland issues, but as far as stormwater, I think we can, I think we can, I think there's a way to make it work. And as far as. You know, trying to either reduce impervious or provide additional infiltration to meet some of those stormwater requirements to get closer to the standards, I think is possible. I also had some concerns about the outlet to that infiltration system at the bottom of the hill. Ken was able to kind of point out or show me that 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 pipe actually is not gonna result in concentrated flow crossing the property line, that there's actually a ditch there. So that actually helps resolve that concern. So. Ken already mentioned the fact that we're worried about the drainage down that proposed access road, so I think they're on that. I, I'll leave it at that. I think the rest of the issues are pretty well documented in the letter.
Okay. All right, thanks, Andy.
Sure, thank you.
And Carol? Have you weigh in on this?
Yeah, I just met with Ken a short time ago to further discuss this. As far as the aquatic resource permit, except for the drainage ditch, which we've discussed prior and we may be allowing them, that's the redesign, we've allowed them to fill that given some improvements. The rest is strictly buffer and as far as the quality wetland is in the south and the south portion of North Grand, so that's not where they're doing any of the impact. The pond area has actually all been impacted in the past. The concern really is it's the, it's a fragmites-dominated wetland which has very little value. So we were discussing the idea of making this a restoration project and trying to improve, improve conditions by getting rid of the fragmites and we discussed a couple of options of how to go about that and we're going to talk to, get Ken, an expert in fragmites removal. And if that's the case, this actually can be a benefit to this site. And the other concern was, you know, the fragmites within the actual detention basins as it stands. So if we can work through the fragmites removal, I think the town shouldn't have any issue with the aquatic resource permit.
It sounds like you guys met already. Eric suggested, you know, offline meeting.
Andy, Ken and I met the other day and I had met with Ken earlier today to discuss some, some ideas about restoration of that site.
Okay. So Ken, do you think you're gonna be submitting for December then because of that or it's gonna take a while to get through those issues?
Well, I think that, you know, we can work through the. Come up with a commitment to work through the mitigation plan. As Carol pointed out through our discussion, there isn't an exact science as it is somewhat with stormwater for the specifics of it. So that'll take a little bit of time with us and her to work through some of the specific language and notes on a plan. But I think that overall, we can work through a commitment that we are going to proceed with that, which will hopefully let us move through, at least through the seeker process. zoning board and then by the time we get back for site plan approval, we. In effect for the actual approval documents.
Okay, so maybe in January then, you're back.
Yep.
All right. Thanks. This is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. It's called question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Anyone on the call wish to comment on the all-space self-storage? If you're on Zoom, you can just raise your hand or unmute yourself, or if you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself. Not seeing anyone right now. There will be another opportunity, so I move we adjourn the site plan and special use permit public hearing to January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Six.
Six. Oh, I forgot to count myself. The previous motion is six to zero too. I'm sure you've corrected me already. All right. Let's go around the board for comments. Ben, anything?
Good to see that there's a lot of people getting together with this. A lot of work to be done.
Might want to pull your mic down.
It's good to see everybody getting together like this. There's a lot of work to be done, it looks like. And I just reserve any comment till we. Things are more stable.
Yep, all right. Peter?
There are two issues here that were outstanding. One is the drainage. It looks like there's a path forward to addressing that. The other is you can't show us pictures of trees, the photo being taken in June. Now, you have to take that photo in November, December, January, when all the leaves are off the trees. You know, I think the concern here from going to. From residential to a light industrial use, the concern of having a deleterious effect on the property values of the residential neighboring property owners and that's a real concern. You know, I was hoping you could come up with a different design feature for these buildings because they're gonna be overlooking them based on the topography. So I just hope that you can come up with a better idea to better either change the architecture or provide a better structural screening between an industrial use and a single-family residential use.
Yeah, that's why we felt the trees were important and bunches, you know, especially the evergreens. All right. Nicole on?
Well, this question could be actually for Andy. Andy, we had spoken about possibility of reducing either buildings or impervious surface in general. Is that something that no longer needs to be done? Andy, are you there?
Stuck off on mute.
I wouldn't say it no longer needs to be done. It's an, it's an, it's an option. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, it's an option. Ken and his group, they can either try to provide additional infiltration if they can find room for it or the other alternative is to reduce impervious, which would, you know, is, is another way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if there's the ability to do some pervious pavement there, but it sounds like there's, you know, issues with infiltration in general. All right, Ahmad, anything?
Just scrolling, I'm also think there are a lot of work need to be done and the way it is good beneficial to resolve a lot of the issues and hopefully we'll have better project.
All right, Steve?
No additional comment.
All right. I mean, I thought we had asked you to try to show where that house is on the plans, the north, North Grand, the house across the street, just so we have a reference. And the plan set for that.
Make sure to add that.
And let's see what else I had. You explained the red, the change from red cedars to the, from the arborvitae. I'm gonna make sure that, that it's sufficient. As Peter mentioned, we really want to screen this from the neighbors because this is a lot closer to the neighbors than the previous expansion and we don't want any kind of lighting. We gotta make sure the lighting stays under three thousand Kelvin.
Yep.
And does not shine up at any of the neighbors. And if you guys need to meet again, that might be a good thing to do before the next semi-final. Eric suggested just to kind of clear, clear up any stormwater concerns as well as the wetland impacts.
Andy and Carol have been great to work with. We'll work with them to get a cohesive package together for the next submission.
Sounds good and try to figure out what to do with those invasive fragmites would be good. As part of the effort. So that's it.
Okay, I move that the planning board determine that the seeker review is incomplete and defer further action on this application subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, the following one through fourteen.
Does that include comments tonight?
Yes, it does. Comments of November sixteen.
That was number fourteen, yeah, great.
That should be November seventeen.
It should be, actually, yes. November seventeenth.
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, thanks, Ken. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your help.
A lot of, quite a few, but a few roadblocks in this project, so. Working your way through it.
Yep. Next.
Storage depot at Page Park.
Meeting you here? Not sure.
Welcome, Ken.
I'm not sure if you need a presentation for this or want one. Really, not much has changed from last time to the board that I believe. We worked through a lot of the issues. We received our variants. Working through the water and the. Run a blank now at the name of what we need for it.
Transportation Corp.
Thank you. We're working through the Transportation Corporation and being that this project has no real water use other than a hydrant, we're hoping we can make that a condition of C O because that does take a little bit of time to complete.
All right. Thanks, Ken. I'll go to Kristen for.
All right, cool. So, yep, I just want to point out for the board that the recommendation does refer to seeker review. Seeker was actually completed in September, so just wanted to make that clear for the record. The application is on for special use permit review, site plan review and architectural review. It is also on for a public hearing this evening, but staff is recommending due to the fact that most, if not all of the comments have been addressed at this point from a planning perspective at least, that the board would open the public hearing, close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for conditional approval for special use on site plan and then conduct architectural review.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Andy, any comments on this one?
Yeah, we're, like Ken said, most of our comments have been addressed. We're just asking that a note be added to the plan about resolution of the Transportation Corporation issue prior to issuance of a C O.
Okay, great. And at this time, I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on Storage Depot? Again, you can raise your hand on Zoom or just wave frantically. Or star six if you're on the phone. To unmute yourself. All right, seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right. Let's go around the board for comments. Start with Steve.
No additional comment.
Ahmad?
No comments.
Nicole?
Just a quick question. The fence, the chain link fence, you guys were doing black?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, I remember we discussed that last time. That's good.
Okay, yep.
Peter? Ben?
No comment.
Yep, and that's Transportation Corp was my only comment, so you're working on that. And we'll continue too.
I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional site. conditional site plan approval for storage depot expansion, subject to the following, respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following, one through 10.
Second.
Moved and seconded, grant conditional, call, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, can you share your screen and show any architecture?
Sure, bear with me one second while I get this up.
Think we've looked at it before, but just want to...
Standard style building, metal building roof, the accent colors will be tan and red to be consistent with the storage depot upfront, as this is an expansion.
Okay.
Those are the two color crimson, red, and I've...
So which part is going to be red, the doors?
Doors will be red, and the roof will be red, and the rest of it will be tan, correct?
Okay. And as we just discussed, the black chain link fence.
Correct.
Anyone have any comments on architecture?
Looks like a storage unit.
It's a storage unit. It's kind of set back off the road on the industrial site there, so, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, good to go on this one, Ken?
Thank you, everyone.
Is that it for tonight for you?
I think that's it.
All right, and have a good night. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too.
All right, next up is Children's Home of Poughkeepsie, who's on to represent Children's Home?
Hey Chairman, this is Kyle Bargwell from the LaBella Associates.
Hey Kyle, how you doing?
Good.
So, what changes have happened since last?
Sure, so, we were in front of the board last month to discuss our first admission, since that planning board meeting, we made changes and submitted back to the town to address comments made in the comment letters for the previous meeting, some of the things we did were we added spot rates, and additional width dimensions to the ADA walkway from the ADA spaces on site to our modular center, we had, we also added wheel stops at each of the parking spaces for added protection against running into the building, we also added emergency truck maneuvering plan to our plan set to show that the modular has no impact on the current emergency vehicle access to the site, we also added a note to our plan set that restoration would occur 36 months after the project to the existing conditions as they're on site today, is a reminder that this is a temporary modular center to be removed after three years, we have been working to include a sprinkler system into our design in the building, and that will be submitted with the building parts, building department submission, there's been, there was one question at the last planning board meeting, brought up by the board, that just wanted to get some further information from our client, and that was related to the age of students using the modular, so I just got some firm answer that would likely be, like, between the ages of 11 and 17 are likely to use this modular, there was also some questions about maneuvering around the site and how kids would access this modular, and I was told that each classroom has a teacher or some counselor that would be walking with each group of kids around the campus currently, and that would also occur to this modular. Since the last mission, we have received some comments from the town, related to confirming adequate width on the sidewalk, which we will do, the last, since the last mission, we also added additional detail to our utility water line profile, as well as adding insulation to where the water line comes into the building. I've had some...
Don't want that to freeze.
Exactly, tonight we're in front of the board for a public hearing, I wanted to open it up to the public to see if there was any comment, and at one point, I was hoping that it was possible that the board would grant a resolution of conditional approval, and we would address any remaining comments, and send it back to the board for final approval.
All right, thanks Kyle, Kristen, yours also?
Okay, thank you Kyle for the overview, it's helpful, so the application's on for public hearing this evening, seeker review, site plan, and architectural review, from a planning department perspective, there are rather limited comments left, although I know there are some conversations about infrastructure still to be had, and I know that the applicant is diligently working on that with our infrastructure folks, as well as our engineering staff, there is a draft negative declaration in your packet for consideration in adopting seeker this evening, and so, with that, I would probably just defer to Andy Lern in engineering to provide some engineering perspective, but if the board felt comfortable, the staff is recommending that the board open here, open the public hearing, hear comments, depending on what they hear, and how the discussion goes, potentially closing the public hearing, adopting seeker, and adopting a conditional amended site plan approval, and conducting an architectural review with the applicant. I also just wanted to point out to Kyle, that, you know, the, I think the board had some interest in, in potentially understanding, after the removal of the structure, I know that there was a restoration plan provided, but long-term, for the children's home, you know, is, is there a plan to develop a permanent structure, and I, if you have that detail, I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but, you know, I think if we could get some of that information, it would be helpful, and that's it.
Yep. All right, thanks Kristen. Andy?
Sure, I think our biggest outstanding issue has to do with the sewer connection, there is a, a water main in Fulton Avenue that they will need to cross with that line, and it's unclear if they'll have adequate separation, or if they'll be able to make the, the, the turn, basically with the vertical curve for the, the pipe into that existing manhole, it's likely that a, a manhole will be required to facilitate that connection, if that is the case, the county health department would require, approval would be required, I'm actually okay if we want to make that a condition, if that, if, if the board so chooses, so that they can move forward with this, I, I think it's likely that they'll be able to find a way around that, the, the existing infrastructure that's there, you know, with a solution, so that this project can kind of keep moving, I know there's some other work on sidewalks along Fulton Avenue that's planned for the spring, so there's some urgency to get it, get this moving, the other issues are relatively minor, we did ask for an ADA space on the, on the same side of the access road as the, the proposed building, let's see, and then, we were, you know, asking about lights, making sure that all the lights are compliant with town code requirements, as far as shielding and dark skies compliance.
All right, thanks Andy.
Sure.
And the lighting also, Kyle, we, we want to stay under the 3,000 Kelvin temperature. All right. At this time, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero, anyone in the room or on the Zoom call wish to comment on the children's home?
Kyle, have you stopped sharing?
Yep, stop sharing.
Oh, sorry about that.
See if anyone's waving on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody.
It's mainly applicants at this point, so, seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero, let's go around the board for comments, Peter?
Just two questions, one, one is a question of clarity, and that is, at the end of three years, if the children's home decides that they're, they're not going to demolish the building, that they say, what happens? How do we go, where, where do we go from there?
They have to come back to us for...
It's a good question, I mean, there would be essentially, I believe it's documented on the plan, if it's not, we would have a note, and I believe we did already ask for this note on the site plan, essentially it would be out of its approval, I would believe, and then that they would be able to seek an additional approval, but they would have to come back to us, I'm not really sure how we could formalize that separately of a note on the plan.
Okay, I would suggest that we do formalize it, that we have something definitely, that there's a definite agreement and understanding of what happens at the end of three years, if they decide that they're not going to, if they, if they want to continue using that facility, we need to have something spelled out.
Yep.
So we should make it a condition that it comes back to the planning board if it, if it needs to extend beyond three years, or it needs to be removed?
Well, we should have some, some type of agreement.
Okay.
I mean, I would also like to point out, I mean, it would be three years from, like, their, their opening.
Right, three years from opening, not three years from now, yeah.
Right. Lisa, do you have any ideas about that?
No, not specifically, I mean, I would think that a note on the plans would be enforceable, but if the board were inclined and wanted a separate, you know, letter agreement or something like that, that the applicant would sign, we could certainly do that too, I don't think there's anything that would need to get recorded in the chain of title, or need town board approval, but, you know, whatever the board is comfortable with.
Well, I think something's, a specific note on the plan should do it, there should be at least that.
Okay, all right, so we have an idea, because it is supposed to be a temporary facility.
It should be spelled out.
All right, thanks Peter.
The other thing is, I, I haven't got, really gotten an answer to a question I had before, and it may, might be on the plan sets that we got, but I didn't see it, there were about 30 or 40 parking spaces here that are being dislocated, I didn't see anything on the map about where they're being shifted to.
I don't know if Kyle, you want to talk to that, but I do know that the applicant is required to host, I believe, according to their parking schedule, 62 parking spaces, which is a part of a previous approval, for what's on the property currently, there are existing 165 spaces, if I was reading this correctly, but again, Kyle, I'll defer to you.
So they have way more than me?
Sure, Peter, it's a valid question with the, the lots of parking that we're, you know, proposing with this project, as Kristen stated, you know, there's a required amount of parking of, of 62 spaces on site, we will have a total of 132 following our, our project, if the, if the applicant, you know, we talked to them, and right now they don't have an issue with parking on site, obviously if they ever did need additional parking, based on needs, we would have to come in front of the board for...
Let me ask you this, of the 130 spaces, are they all, are they existing?
Correct, so, it's a reduction from an existing 165.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, it sounds like they, it sounds like they're meeting their needs with that at the moment. Ben, anything?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Nicole?
Just to piggyback off of what Peter was saying about parking spaces, I just want to make sure you are making sure that there is ADA handicap parking spaces around this new structure, I don't know specifically the children that will be going there, but I'm sure there will be some that may be handicapped, just want to make sure that they do have parking spaces, if they're coming in on any vehicles that need to be, you know, in a handicap spot, that you are providing that.
Sure, I, I can answer that Nicole, so, right now, I'm going to share my screen again, if that's okay? In a previous site plan in front of the town of Poughkeepsie, we were actually granted approval for two ADA spaces, and this is directly across from the modular, so our plan was to put a crosswalk striping right at the sidewalk of the ADA spaces to connect, with Andy's comment requesting, you know, one closer to our modular, I, I don't see any issue with being able to implement one of these spot spaces as an ADA as well to meet that comment.
Yeah, I think you need to definitely have one as close to that building as possible, so if you could make that happen, that'd be great.
Sure.
Yeah, I think the, you know, building department generally likes that as well, from building codes, closer the better.
Sure.
Anything else Nicole?
I think you answered this last time, but I just wanted to confirm, this building is fully heated, it's fully cooled, it's correct?
That is correct, my understanding that it is heated and cooled, and had, you know, all the lighting requirements to meet code.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that, all right, thank you.
Sounds good, we don't need to, issues with that.
Yeah.
No additional comments.
All right, Steve?
Kyle, one point, you have two crosswalks, and I noticed on the north, you do propose a sign pedestrian crossing, is there a reason why you wouldn't have that same kind of signage on the south side, since that's the more main entrance?
Sure, and that's a, and that's a good question, and I talked with the client about positive putting a sign, and I'll share my screen again. Kind of right in this location here, prior to the crosswalk, so that would, you know, plenty of any people coming in this direction, that there would be a crosswalk.
Yeah, that, so that they're agreeable to doing that?
Yes, yep, yep, I spoke with the client there.
Oh yes, I had actually provided that comment to him, from an earlier, after an earlier meeting this week.
Yep, keep safety in mind. Thank you, that's all.
Yeah, just to, to show you, I actually kind of came up with a little schematic that would be assigned here, was that, and, you know, this was this one here, and we're going to keep it in this location.
All right, thanks Kyle.
Sure. And... I, I guess I can, I can answer the, the first comment from Kristen that was made, regarding like, the, the aspect after three years, so just to, just to give the board a little more context, so right now, the children's home is under a program where there's probably more kids on site than usual, they're a little cramped in space, these kids are only staying for a temporary time, and it's not right now expected that that program's going to continue for more than three years, so that's why it's just a temporary structure at this time, but our client knows that it would have to abide with removing the structure at three years, we'd be fine with putting a note on the plan stating such, or we'd have to come in front of the board again for further continuation of this.
Okay, keep in mind, the most faded ink is clearer than the sharpest memory. Yep, so, it's good to have it on the, inked on the plan.
Sure.
All right, the other question, I, I remember seeing something about a four-foot sidewalk, stand, don't we have five-foot sidewalks as standard?
Yeah, we're gonna just confirm that with our building department.
Okay, make sure that's, that's correct.
Andy, do you have a specific...
Yeah, I mean, actually, four feet is enough for ADA, five foot, five foot, five-foot sidewalks are typically required along highways, internal to sites, four feet is, is typically okay.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, Andy, I guess, good to go then.
Okay, I move the planning board hereby determines that the children's home of Poughkeepsie Modular Learning Center would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in a seeker negative declaration for an unless action dated November 17, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded, for seeker, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for children's home of Poughkeepsie Modular Learning Home, subject to the following, respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following, one through nine, adding a note on the plan that the building will be, will only be used for 36 months, and then it will be removed.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Just to clarify, we're, we're going to say, the notes are actually going to say that they'd have to come back to the planning board if they needed to extend that.
Right. Be removed, or, removed, or come back to the board for extension.
I got you.
All right, it's...
Second again.
Moved and seconded again, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. And, do you want to share your screen to show architecture of the building again, just to...
Sure. I'll just close it first. So the, so the modular is an existing... So the, so the modular is an existing modular. What it'll do is be transported to the site. I spoke with the modular company on the type of materials that they use. So the outside exterior of the modular is this smart panel, which is like a composite material. We plan on picking the sandy color, which is kind of a tannish to match the existing structures on children's home site. This is a Google Earth image of showing the existing children's home. So there was a question about the ramps that are also gonna be attached to the modular. So they sent us, basically, their standard detail for their aluminum ADA ramp that would be attached to the doors. So, so, you know, pretty basic system, you know, it's an existing structure that they're basically moving to the site. It's just composite smart panels on the side.
All right. Any board members have comments on the architecture? It's a modular classroom. All right, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero. All right, good luck with the project.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving. Next up, it's Chief Manor Mobile Home Park. Lot line changes. Who's on representing? Bill?
Good evening, it's Bill Polwell. I'm the engineer for the applicant. Augusta LLC.
All right. Do you have anything to present? What's...
Looks like he's trying to pull the plan up.
Yeah.
You're here in the spring, I guess, so this is some additional modifications.
For some reason, I'm not seeing the shared screen.
There you go.
All right. Yeah, we're here tonight for the Chief Manor Mobile Home Park, which is located behind the Poughkeepsie Galleria on the opposite side or the north side of Chief Road. The applicant has purchased this park about two or three years ago, and what we're proposing tonight is to do some upgrades. He really wants to clean the place up and create better conditions. This is the existing condition plan, but right now, the road system comes in off of Chief Road to a dead end, which is called Camelot Road, and then it comes in here and then goes to the back. What we're proposing is to continue this Camelot Road, which dead ends to Chief Manor Road, which will provide looped connection, which would be much safer for the residents as well as emergency vehicles. In doing so, we need to relocate home number forty-four, which would be taking down an existing garage, shifting thirty-one and placing it over here. So we're basically relocating it. As part of the application, we're looking to install four homes that were previously approved and that are not in place now. We're looking to replace home number one, which is in the front here, reposition it, because right now it actually goes out into the Chief Road right away. So we would take that home, turn it, and pull it in. With the plan, we're realigning the entrance on Chief Manor Road out onto Chief Road. Right now, it comes in and turns. It's kind of tight. We're proposing to make a ninety-degree entrance at this location. We're also proposing some visitor parking on the right side of this easterly or northeasternly entrance. We're proposing some additional parking in the back. We're proposing to repave the whole, resurface the existing road system, which will include the, a few of the alignments. With that, the intention is to put in gravel parking spaces for each of the units, because a lot of people right now park on the road. And then also with this, with this plan, we're proposing a lot line realignment between the Chief Manor Mobile Home Park and the Camelot Mobile Home, Camelot Mobile Home Park just to the east. And what that would do is change the property line where there's certain encroachments from one of the properties onto the other. And then with this, there's an existing fence, which is in disrepair in a lot of places, and it also encroaches in many locations in the Chief Road right away. So we would replace that, that fencing with a stockade fencing and bring that out of the Chief Road right away onto the, onto this parcel. But that's, that's basically, you know, that highlights of the improvements that we're proposing.
Sounds good. Thanks, Bill. Kristen?
Okay, thank you. The application last, appeared before the planning board back in March this year. At that point, the, the planning board had circulated its intent to be lead agency, and to date, no objection has been received. The application is also on for, in addition to seeker review, waterfront consistency review, lot line revision review, special use permit, and site plan review. There are pretty much, the comments that are left are relatively straightforward, at least, again, from a planning perspective. I, you know, I've pretty much just cotton-pasted in the lot line revision code language, so we'll just, you know, be reviewing the information that's been submitted, making sure that the deeds include the language that's prescribed by the town code. Right now, I think we received a, like a survey, but we actually need like the deed descriptions and the deed itself to acknowledge those notes. So I, we'll just have to get that sorted out. If you have questions, we can definitely talk through that. Site plan related comments, again, are pretty minor. The zoning administrator did point out that they're just awaiting the, the application about your fence to be along the property line in terms of seeking a variance. So I don't know necessarily if that should stop the planning board from issuing a conditional approval this evening. The applicant is, you know, approving the site, but at this point, staff has prepared a draft negative declaration for your consideration. And based on the outcome of the discussion this evening, it is on for public hearing. Any public comment you might hear, you could proceed with opening and closing the public hearing, adopting seeker, providing a waterfront for consistency, coastal consistency review, and adopting a conditional lot line revision approval, and adopting a resolution to grant special use permit and site plan. There is one thing I just wanted to point out. Under E in my draft of the lot line, conditional lot line revision approval, the text refers to subject of the following. The following really should just be number one, as it appears. Also, under your conditional site plan and special use permit, town planning department comments dated November tenth, which are just my comments, which reference the language in the lot line revision code section.
Sounds good. Do we need to do any kind of architectural reviews since he's, I guess he's moving the unit?
No, we didn't think that was necessary when the original application came in. So at this point, I would say no.
Yep.
I mean, if Bill wants to share what they might look like, but otherwise, no.
All right. Thanks, Kristen. Andy, you have...
Sure. You know, like Kristen said, most of our comments are minor. We have one comment about making sure that the sanitarian division at the health department is involved and has a chance to look at the proposed changes. I don't think that's gonna be a significant issue. We mentioned the deeds and then a minor comment about sewer, sewer service lines needing cleanouts. So we're, as far as we're concerned, the plans are in good, good shape.
Sounds good. And the unit you're adding was already approved as part of the whole overall site plan, right?
There was a comment or question that was asked earlier this week as well, that I had, that had trickled down from the planning board. I did actually reach out to New Hamburg Fire Department with respect to the fire hydrants. So there are, fire hydrants are actively in use within the right of way on Chief Road. There are none internal to the property. So I think just a conversation with the fire department, you know, their concern is, I think they're trying to meet a minimum, or it's, it would exceed four hundred feet internally to the site, and so they don't feel comfortable with that, which is why they're requesting a placement.
I thought, I thought it's usually six hundred feet is the concern.
I am just quoting the...
They said four hundred this time.
I am not an expert, so, yeah, I think that can be sorted out relatively easily. But, you know, I mean, it won't be easy, but it'll be a conversation.
Right. All right, that could be a condition to, to look at that. Okay, it's on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero. Anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on this project, Chief Manor, or in the room?
And if you're on the Zoom by phone, you can hit star six to unmute yourself.
Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero. Anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on this project, Chief Manor, or in the room?
And if you're on the Zoom by phone, you can hit star six to unmute yourself.
Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero. All right, let's go on board for comments. Start with Ben.
Looks like everything is in favor here. Looks like this is in good shape. I don't see a problem.
Peter?
It's great to see a new owner come in, take her property, improve it cosmetically. Great improvements, the traffic flow, additional parking. It's all good.
Yep. Nicole?
Yep, that was my comment about the fire hydrants. So definitely, if you guys could get with the fire department and see whether or not one or two needed to be installed within the park, that'd be great.
And I guess the, you know, the additional road connection will help the fire circulation, fire truck circulation as well.
I echo Peter's comments.
And...
Bill, just one point of clarification. The front area that's designated as snow, snow storage, those two parking spots are gonna be eliminated in the winter, it seems like, to have parking and then when it snows, the people are gonna be there unless it's... So it is gonna be no parking, it's just snow, snow storage?
Is that part of the visitor parking?
Yeah, it's the visitor overflow parking and that will be reserved to place snow, you know, during those times.
All right.
Nicole, just one comment?
Sure. Go ahead.
Just one, everything looks great. I just, one comment, that reserved parking area, the visitor parking in the back, you had said that gave a vegetated cover detail where the road is going to be removed. That should be expanded into that entire area.
Okay.
Just where, where there's compacted soil and where there was storage and dumping and everything in the past. So just, basically just around, around that area as well, not just...
Sounds good. All right, thanks, Carol. And I think, what color did the fence wind up being? I think we were changing it from bright red to something else.
Yeah.
They'll actually do a color detail for you. I don't know if you have that.
Yeah, we're proposing a, I could share my screen, I have a picture of it.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, kind of a tan. So it's a tan beige vinyl stockade fence. Pretty straightforward, actually.
Are we good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Forward with motions.
I move the planning board hereby determine that the Chief Manor would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement would be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated November seventeen, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the Chief Road Manor amended site plan application is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved and seconded for LWRP, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional lot land revision approval and also grant a one-time sixty-day extension as permitted by town code. I've set approval from Monday, January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, forward to Friday, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, subject to the following: One, town planning department comments dated November tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan approval for Chief Manor Road amended site plan, subject to the following: Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Instead response to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness, inclusive but not limited to the following, one through nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded for conditional, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to zero again. All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving. Take care.
All right, happy Thanksgiving. Have a good night.
Next up is Nine McGrange Ave. Who's on representing?
Evening. Brandon Petrella with Mori Architects.
Brandon?
Share my screen real quick. Not much has changed since our last meeting to the proposal, except for we have addressed several of the comments from the municipality. Water and sewer, I think we've kind of finalized. We are going to be bringing in a, two separate lines for domestic, one for sprinkler. Sewer has requested, we have an existing four-inch. Sewer has requested that we replace that with a six-inch and some cleanouts. We have no problem doing that. We'll revise that on the plans. Since then, we have also gone to zoning board. We got all three of the variances we requested. And the last, I mean, the last couple items, I believe, left over from the comments were hinging on us getting a survey. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get that survey completed in time, but it is supposed to be available to us after Thanksgiving. That being said, it's a relatively flat site. The reasoning for the survey was to make sure that we can meet all of our handicap accessibility, the ramps, the layout, show all that on the plan, and then also make a design for the underpavement infiltrators for the stormwater. So our thought process is, is that, you know, is all relatively simple, and it's not really going to change the layout of the site. So we're hoping that, you know, these are all things that have to be done for the project to proceed anyway. It's just, I don't want to hold up the approval. So we're hoping to make those conditions of the approval. But other than that, I think we've pretty much got everything buttoned up.
All right, thanks, Brandon. Kristen?
Thanks, Brandon. Okay, so the application is on for a public hearing this evening. We have seeker review. I do have a draft negative declaration in your packet for consideration. It's on for special use permit and site plan review. Staff is recommending with the, you know, comments that are remaining, the, as Brandon alluded to, the site or the survey and some other items, I think that staff would feel comfortable making those conditions of approval. So staff is recommending that the board open the public hearing, hear comment, and depending on what is heard and the discussion this evening, potentially closing the public hearing, adopting seeker, and also adopting a resolution to grant conditional special use and site plan approval.
All right, we can do architecture as well, I guess.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Andy, anything remaining on this?
Uh, no, just, you know, the couple of items related to the site survey and topography that Brandon mentioned. I'm okay with those issues being addressed as a condition if the board feels it's appropriate.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
At this point, I move we open the public hearing. At this point, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Anyone on the call, can you unshare your screen, Brandon, so we can see the, thanks? Anyone wish to comment on this Nine La Grange Ave new project? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Let's go around the board for some comments. Nicole, start with you.
Um, no, I don't really have any comments, the only thing that I have here is that you'll be responsible for a rec fee, which I'm sure you already know.
Yes, that's correct.
Come on, no comments. And Steve?
Just one comment, parking, since you have these apartments, where will people park other than the, the garage?
The, the parking in the garage, and then we also have the three spaces that are directly behind it as well. Guest parking would have to be on-street parking, which would be similar to most of the buildings that are on that site.
It's Arlington Town Center Zone. All right, thanks Steve. Peter?
I, I think you've done a great job. My only question is making the survey a condition of approval, this is a very tight site, so what do we do if there are any surprises? In other words, if the width is, particularly I'm concerned about the width, what happens? Would they come back to us, or do we have to make adjustments, what happens?
Lisa, do you have any comments on that?
I suppose it would really depend what the survey showed and what the significance of the changes that needed to be made. I would think that we're not anticipating anything that would be, require any changes to the site plan, if they did, that would probably be some minor, that it could be a field change, but if it was something major, then, and that type of change needed to be made, then they would have to come back to the planning board, but we're not anticipating that. And I think the applicant understands that they're, in essence, proceeding at their own risk with the approval at this point.
I'm just saying, hope for the best plan for the, plan for the worst.
Right.
Yeah, it's a fairly flat site, as, as they said, and so, so shouldn't mean the ADA that it has to be.
Yeah, and just so you know, that is very clearly stated in the engineering comments as their comment number one, so inherently in your recommendation, when we say, you know, subject to the following town engineering department comments, that is a condition of approval, so we will not be approving it unless they submit that information, which it sounds like it will be available to us after Thanksgiving, so.
Okay, sounds good. And Ben, anything?
Nice, nice compact meat package, no other comment.
Yeah, I mean, my, you got the variances granted, the only question I had was lighting, you're staying under 3,000 Kelvin and?
That's correct, all of the fixtures are 3,000 Kelvin, all of the new proposed fixtures, the lights on the, on the building, the wall packs, and the single light pole.
All right, sounds good, it's good to see, see an improvement.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be a good improvement on that corner, I think.
I move the planning board hereby determine that Nine La Grange Ave would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth for the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated November 17, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan approval for Nine La Grange Ave subject to the following, respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following one through six.
Second.
Moved and seconded, grant conditional, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero again. All right, Brandon, can you share your screen to show some architecture?
Absolutely.
Nice drawings, we have some of those drawings.
Yeah, so these should have been included in your packet, these, this is the front apartment building here on the lower left, and then on the right, we have the new proposed garage that'll be in the rear of the site. Also included here now are some of the finishes that we're talking about, and I'll just point them out real quick, they're all fairly obvious, it's relatively simple, but we have an architectural high-definition shingle that will be consistent across the two buildings. There is some accents in the gable ends of the existing apartment building that'll be front and back, and that's a vinyl siding shingle in a darker gray. In a light gray, there'll be a horizontal vinyl siding that goes, and again, across the buildings, it'll be similar finishes. And then we have the brick veneer water table, it's going to be thin brick applied to the building, and then last, we have a standing seam metal canopy that comes in a, like a darker, I think it's called harbor gray.
Hey, great, looks nice to me, any architectural comments from other board members? No, no changes required, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Looks nice, it'll be a good project.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Good luck to have a Thanksgiving. All right, next up, I see Jeff is waiting in the wings here, East Dale Village, number 21.
Good evening.
You haven't got into the double digits yet, or triple digits yet.
We're deep into the doubles.
Deep into the doubles.
With Kurtoff Companies representing East Dale Village, if I can share my screen, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
So, we'll talk for a minute about the, what we're doing with one of the buildings on the, on the west side, it's building E1, and just, just to kind of orient you, Route 44 is across the bottom of the screen here, and this is the commercial area, the E block, and we are at the, at the corner of East Dale Avenue and Route 44, building E1. And you remember this from, from Site Plan Amendment 15, the building at that point was proposed as a three-story in over commercial, and I just did kind of did, you know, back and forth between what the original approval was and, and this approval, so really, it's just, you know, three of the dimensions are, are the same, we're the same width across, across East Dale Avenue, the same width across 44, and the back portion is the same, but it's just, I'm sorry, it doesn't, doesn't go, it doesn't go as far across 44, it's the same distance from 44, but it doesn't go back as far, and so instead of that back end of the building, which is what the original was, we've now replaced that with, with outdoor seating, and again, it's become a two-story building instead of a three-story building, so fairly, I think, minor changes in the footprint. Overall, the building got 7,188 square feet smaller, part of it is we got rid of the basement, it was 4,600 square feet, again, the footprint was reduced, moved 18, a little over 18 feet further away from the Frank property. The second floor, which was kind of an outdoor terrace, you might remember, that now becomes interior play, interior space, those are apartments on the second floor, so that second floor got bigger by 1,478 square feet, third floor was eliminated, and then essentially the outdoor dining moved off the terrace onto the, onto the first floor, so ended with a smaller building and, and have that, that, that outdoor, outdoor dining. But again, we, we really kind of maintained the landscaping that we had before, even just, just snapshots of the landscape plan to really, again, protect the Frank property, protect views into the, into the site.
All right.
And then the other thing we did is, we've been talking with, our border on the, on the, on the other side of the road, our, our border with the neighbors who faced their place and back on to, to our site, there's a lot of the existing landscaping there, and part of the existing, existing significant trees, so part of our requirement was to put fencing in or landscaping there. To do that, in some places, we'd have to remove mature trees to put smaller trees or put, put fencing in, so we've been talking to some of the neighbors about how best to accomplish that, and so we've got some changes proposed, the fencing gets swapped out, and we've got the combination of, of the arborvitae and white pines along that, leaving fence in a, in a couple of locations, but there, I just kind of broke this into three snapshots as you moved down.
Yeah, I was trying to, trying to get through that, I meant, I may have downsized the, the houses there, the townhomes to be two stories, if they're, so that they're more like.
Yes, yes, right, yes, these are two, right, these are two-story, yes, to, right, and then, yeah, so we didn't want them, you know, again, take those trees down, didn't, didn't seem to work for anybody, so we've.
You don't want to, you want, still want screen there even, even with that.
Right, we wanted, we didn't want to take down screening to put up screening, to put up smaller screen, which is really kind of what the plan required as it was, because to put in fencing there, we would have had to take down trees that are right on the property line, and that didn't make sense anywhere.
So you've negotiated with the neighbors to have?
Yes, a combination of, in some places of.
What you're keeping and what you're adding.
Right, that's right, some, some places we're, we're leaving it as was, as was originally proposed, and some places we're replacing the fence with landscaping, so.
Shouldn't we have some kind of confirmation from the neighbors for that effect? I mean, just to be on the safe side, with all, all respect.
Sure.
You know, if we're going to change the plan based on the neighbor's ascent, you should have some communication with the neighbors that it's okay with them.
Yep, probably a good idea.
If we can provide that to you before the chair, chair.
No, I know you can.
What's that?
I said, I know that you can.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, that's right.
I'm just saying, we wanted, you know, it's dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
It's a good comment.
Yep, anything else?
Um, we're, so I, I, this kind of last slide here shows the Darrow Place Connector Road, we are, this is not really on the plan, this is just kind of FYI, but the building 15 right here in the corner, we're looking to, to get a CO in that building as early as next week, and then as soon as that's open, this will be open, so, you know, Wednesday, maybe get pushed a week, this, this road will be, will be open, it's paved, the gate's in, everything's ready to go, just waiting to get the, the CO for this building so we can, with, with some confidence, open that up. There will be, there will be a fence right here, so people coming out of the connector road will, will then need to turn left into the project to then get back out into 44, but it, but it.
Until, until that road opens up.
Yes, until that, until the next sections of the road come online, but we're almost ready to open that up.
That's good, that'll allow them to get out at a light, it's, 44 keeps getting busier.
How does the gate work, Jeff? I don't remember the, do people, just, it just, you pull up and? You pull up and it goes up. And it goes up. Only, only if you're heading into the site, right? Pull up going the other way, you're going to sit there a while. Okay, right, so that's, right.
Yeah, it's, it's meant to be a one-way.
It's meant to be one-way, and, and, and just pull up, you don't need a fob, you don't need anything, you just pull up and it goes, right, so that's, right, yeah, right, just tried to keep that very simple.
Sounds good. All right, Eric, Department's comments?
Yep, the application's on for secret consistency review, and as hearing for the amended site plan, and also for the special use permit for the changes to building E1, this particular change in use in the McDonnell Heights Center District requires a special use permit. And we, there before, got a, laid application that addressed those criteria, staff is satisfied with those responses, if you are. We also have a recommendation in your packets for the consistency determination and for a condition approval of the site plan special use permit. We did note to the board that the changes in, the changes in the buildings correspond to a change in demand for parking on each of the two sides of Route 44, there's a, which, there's no change to the actual parking proposed, just a change in the demand, which results in a slight increase in the surplus of the west side, and a slight surplus to a slight deficit on the east side. In the grand scheme of things, with the number of spaces on each side, we did not think that was significant, but we wanted, we quantified that for the board, since you have discussed it in the past.
Yep, and I know they're building more spaces on the, on the west side, they're also now behind.
Right, and, and I will say that parking only a little bit now, because the, the east side isn't really open, but parking is certainly intended to, at peak times, work across 44, so even, so maybe, maybe a surplus here, a deficit there on paper, but it's, it's one site.
All right, thanks Eric. Andy, you have any comments on this update?
Not, not many. We, one of the questions we had was about the, any changes in impervious cover, based on what Jeff's saying, it sounds like it's going to be the same as or slightly less, so that should be fine. We were wondering about making sure that the, the patio area doesn't encroach on or obstruct the access to the, the water meter pit that's, that's there where that lawn text is. Again, I don't, I imagine they've taken that into account, it shouldn't be a problem. The other comments had to do with, you know, providing updates on grading spot elevations for the area, which again, don't foresee that being any, any major concerns, so.
Right, thanks Andy.
Andy, right, that lawn should say lawn and meter pit, right, that's, right.
Yeah, I remember seeing that big meter pit go in under, when I was under construction. All right, it's on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for the site plan and special use permit.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero, and we actually have one person signed up in the room to come up and speak, Joe Lentz.
Good evening, board members, my name is Joe Lentz, I currently reside at 29 Darrow Place. I'm ecstatic overhearing tonight that the access road will be soon usable after the CO is obtained, and tonight, my concern was about that access road. If something should happen, I think the residents of Darrow Place should have a point of contact for anything that should happen maintenance-wise, if the gate should break, or if somehow, snowplowing got overlooked, you know, anything that happened to do with their ability, sorry, to use that access road, they, we would need a point of contact, so I spoke with Jeff tonight, I, I think a, a letter in the mail to all the residents of Darrow Place would be a good idea, just giving them information of who to contact should something happen.
Okay, sounds good, you agree to that, Jeff?
Absolutely, we talked, I talked to Mr. Lentz ahead of time, I just sent an email out to our property manager before we got up here, so yes, we'll get something going.
That's great. Then my only other thing is, I'm kind of a messenger for a resident on Darrow Place, the property right adjacent to that access road had, has a concern about snowplowing in the winter, he says, he's concerned about if snow should get pushed, his property line is real close to the access road, and it's, it's, his, his property is lower than, than the road, and it's not too far off, maybe five feet, and if snow should fall down into that area, he has a air conditioning compressor there, that's what he's really concerned about, so he just would like, wanted me to voice that concern to the board, and that's it.
Okay, do you have any comments on the, on negotiating the tree?
No.
The landscaping, screening there, we discussed earlier.
Does that affect your property, I guess, or is it somebody, or somebody else?
No, that, what we were talking about before?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm on the other side, no, that, that's fine.
So you're not adjacent to them that way?
Right, so, oh, oh, the, the, yeah, I'm, I'm up on the hill, so no, it's whatever, whatever they want, you know, something they can negotiate with them.
Just make sure that you're good with that.
Yep, yep, so that's all. I want to thank everybody and have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thanks for coming in and giving your comments. Right, you're, okay, we're trying to figure out, make sure the snow doesn't fall on...
On the snow, yeah, right, so that, there is, right, there is a asphalt curbing along that connector road. And so I think that'll, that'll help as a guide to make sure the plow doesn't end up pushing it all straight over into the, into the, into the, the neighbors' equipment. But I'll, again, I'll talk to our Director of Property Management and make sure that they know to take care of it.
Okay, then if there's something else physical that can be, you know, the poles or whatever?
Yes, I mean, yes, right, right. The poles usually can from hitting the curb, but they don't necessarily stop the snow, but...
Yeah, I know what you mean, yeah.
But we should put something there as the, as a reminder, at least, so they don't, they know, they know it's an issue, right?
Okay, great.
Jeff, with there, it is pretty, the grading shows that it is a pretty steep drop down to his property. Would there be any possible of putting in something that would address that concern of the snow kind of falling down the hill and onto his property and into that? Because if it's icy, ice can cause a lot of damage. Is there any way to, is there any room there for some kind of a sturdy fence or guard rail or something that would, that could protect his compressor?
Well, we'll look, right, we'll look and see what we can do. Yeah, guide rail wouldn't necessarily keep, again, to keep the snow from going in. I'm, fencing sometimes creates other issues. I don't want them to feel like they're now in a tunnel in that, in that house. I don't want to necessarily fence that. So we'll, maybe there's some kind of low fencing we could put there just to buffer. But let me, we'll spend a few minutes and look at that and see.
It's just a snow fence for the winter or something, but...
Yeah, right, right, maybe that would work, right?
Something to look at.
Yeah, yeah.
Or a line, or maybe like a, you know, line of U bushes or something that are really, that are really sturdy and would, you know, three or four foot high U bushes will really stop the snow and won't be unattractive.
Right.
I mean, maybe, maybe talk with the neighbor and find out what they would like.
Yeah, talk to the neighbor.
That's always the best approach when you're, right on the line there.
Right. Okay, sure.
All right, thanks. Anyone else, yes, anyone else wish to comment on this project? I think it's mostly applicants at this point. Soon now, I move, we close the public hearing for site plan and special use permit.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. All right, go around the board for comments. Ben? Peter?
The basement?
Yes.
Did you eliminate the basement entirely?
For that building, yes, yeah.
Was it because of the water table?
No, we, that has been designed and frankly, we had already installed a foundation drain to take the water out. So didn't need it, nobody wanted to pay for it, so no basement.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, they say, don't want the space, they don't, they...
Right, right, I mean, it becomes an irreversible choice, right? It's, you're not going to put that in later, but yes, that was, fair.
All right, Steve?
No comment.
Ahmad?
No comment.
Nicole?
No comment.
And I guess my only comment is, you know, get that agreement with the neighbors, you know?
Yes, I think just...
Get us a letter that the neighbors agree with the landscaping.
An email or some, or some kind of, right, if it's not a letter, an email is sufficient.
Something that you send to Eric and have on the record. That'll be good, so we're ready to go.
I move that the planning board find that the Eastdale Village application for the 21st amended site plan and for Building E1, special use permit involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of negligible magnitude and scope. That non-significant and inconsistent with the previous secret findings adopted March 15, 2018 and amended September 17, 2020 as modified by the proposed Eastdale Village application received October 24, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero.
Move the planning board grant conditional special use permit approval for Building E1 and conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village 21st amended site plan subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included are not limited to the following, one through six, I'm sorry, one through seven.
And seven.
Plus, you know, some assurance from the neighbors regarding the new landscaping plan.
Right, that's all right, that's seven is comments from the public hearing, planning board meeting. So that will include the landscape, email, and the snow fence slash landscape behind that.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. And you got some architecture to show us.
I do, yes, I do.
Put that in the packet as well. Let's show your screen. It's a little bulky, all right. Hope to resume.
We have copies of the...
Start this again. As Peter said, we have a bunch of copies.
All right, I got it to work, now let me just go back to it.
Computers are useful when they work.
Computers are useful when they work, yes, right, okay. So, right, E1 architectural review for, and the, so Sydney application.
Sorry, Building E?
Sorry, E1, yes, yes, yes. There really are two restaurants on the first floor that are sharing some backspace, but they really have their own separate menus, separate entrances, buns, burgers, and then Barboo Restaurant. We had a little language issue in our, in our office. Barboo is actually Cajun for catfish, but we had lots of spellings of barboo out there before. I think, I think this is the right spelling for the Barboo Restaurant, but I, but don't hold me to it. I think we got it right. So this is a view from Route 44 looking into the site.
So far, we're just seeing, yeah.
Oh, you got...
No.
The cover, cover sheet for the plan deck.
Are you frozen on your end?
I'm not frozen.
Maybe stop sharing and then try to share to... Don't touch anything.
There it is, right, right.
All right, now we got the elevation from Route 44.
A little bit of a lag, okay. This is from Route 44. On the, on the left-hand side, you can see the Rossi's building. On the right-hand side is the new, the new restaurant on the first floor and residential on the, on the second floor. See what happens when I change my page here? Is it going to catch up?
Get the, oh, frozen blue circle there.
How about now? Okay, so it's, it's working, not in slideshow mode, but I can, you can see it now.
You can see it anyway.
So this is the, this is the, again, the kind of long elevation on Eastdale Avenue looking north. So from, from right to left, E1, the twins, E2 and E3, and then the E4 building. Again, this is just kind of some context, you can see the, how the buildings all, all work together. To kind of zoom in to the E1 building, again, this is on Eastdale Avenue. What you don't see on the left side here is, is E2, but it really is there. For whatever reason, the architect took it off of this. So the, the building, again, is, the color is really the hardy iron gray, which we've used on several of the buildings on this, on this elevation. So we've got kind of some smooth, hardy panels across the top. We have our ledge and then the brackets all along underneath the, underneath the ledge there. We've got some hardy plank siding on the, on the second floor and then a stucco finish on the, on the first floor, again, in the, in the, in the hardy iron gray. As you wrap around the corner, then this is the Route 44 side looking, looking at it. So this, this front piece stays in the iron gray. And then as it moves further down, further down the street, everyone, on the second floor, we have the cobblestone over the little bluer, evening blue so that, that iron gray moves into the, into the blues for the, for the longer part of that, that dimension. And then on the top, to kind of explain this, this is a, looks like a mantered roof. It's really, it's really a fake mantered, there's nothing, there's nothing behind it. And this will look like a sloped roof from Route 44, but again, there's nothing behind it. It's just, it's a shingled slope roof to give the impression of, of it not being a flat roof. And as we go around the corner, I'll show you, we've really got our mechanical equipment tucked in behind that. But that, that's again, to give the impression of, of height, the impression of a sloped roof in the building. But it gives us a place to put the mechanicals around the edge. So as we go to the, look at the, at the end of it, see, this time, the architect put Building E2 into the picture. But this is the, this is the back into it, looking into the, the outdoor seating area with the glazing into the restaurant and the, again, the residential windows up above. And then the, the fourth side with Building 2 blocking out some of it. But this is really the, the mechanical equipment sitting underneath that, that kind of fake sloped roof there. And then behind the, behind that mantered on the, on the, on the front building. So again, this is, this is that evening blue with the cobblestone above.
Now, is everybody...
Jeff, on the Duchess Turnpike side, there's...
What's that?
It almost looks like the building extends towards the Frank property with a, like a freestanding wall with an arch door in it.
Yeah.
Because that, that's the...
That blank, that blank...
Yes, it's not on the plans. So, yes, this, this little wall here, something that, that we have toyed with in the landscape plan and will, will probably be asking that to come in as a, as a, as a field change. I think, we think it's going to add a lot to the, to that end and the, and the, and the outdoor seating there.
I'm going to ask, yeah, that's the patio seating behind that.
Yes, yes, right.
I think it looks nice, but I was aware of what Andy mentioned earlier about access to the meter pit.
Right, so the meter pit, yeah, it would stay, I'll go to the site plan for a second, but...
Can you?
Assuming that catches up, right, so that, that wall would be really where the...
Straight at the front edge.
The outdoor seating is, and the meter pit sits back in this area that's not under patio. So you'd still have access back into here or really access from, from either side.
All right. You back to that, I think there was the view from the Frank property, was that, without seeing a big, big white wall?
This view?
I thought there was one that showed a big white wall. Oh, that.
Well, that's just, that's just Building 2.
Oh, oh, okay.
Again, the architect, this time the architect put it like here, the architect put the building in and put the building in here.
That's not there, yeah.
Just didn't put the building in, but didn't, but didn't show the architecture of it. So I got, you know, I got all sorts of variations here. But this is just Building 2 blocking view of the rest of Building 1.
Are those shutters actually working shutters? The ones that are facing the Frank side? I mean, they're shown as closed in the...
You know, I, I didn't ask Giovanni that. Giovanni loves working shutters. I didn't ask him if these are working or not, but they certainly look like they are.
They're closed in that, in that scenario and open on the other sides.
Right. I don't know the answer. I'm surprised, but, but, right, right, they, they may very well be working, but I just...
And so all the, so all the HVAC is screened up there?
Yes.
Because I, I was wondering if you could do something on the, I think it might be E4. As you're coming down Founder's Way toward, toward the main road coming in, you see the back, you do see some HVAC equipment.
On A4 across the...
E4.
On E4.
As you're coming...
Right.
Founder's Way toward the main drag, toward Eastdale Ave.
Right.
There's something.
They're, right.
It's not completely screened.
There is a backside to these buildings. Again, you're going to see, you know, from, from, if you're standing in the parking lot behind E4, you're going to see mechanical units on top of E1. But we try to screen them from the pulpit, but every building has a, has a backside there, but...
All right, thoughts on the architecture and HVAC screening?
It's fun to watch.
Good to go. All right, I move we accept architecture as presented for Building E1.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero.
Thank you. Enjoy your Thanksgiving.
You too.
Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Sure, I'll see you soon.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see you next month.
Yeah, we'll see to you. All right, take care, Jeff. Next up is 76 Ireland Drive Extension Dish Wireless. Who's on representing that?
Hi, I'm Derek Picknick here.
Derek?
Just wanted to say my camera's currently not working. Apologies for, apologies for that.
All right, I don't know if you can share your screen to present though?
Yes, to present, I would like to open up the floor for Agda Shaw, who's my architect. Agda?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just wanted to... Share screen.
I just wanted to open up, the little background, so. My name's Derek Picknick, I'm a site acquisition consultant working for Innerance Solutions. And tonight, I present for Crown Castle on behalf of Dish Network LLC. Dish proposes to install three new antennas to the existing telecommunications tower located at 76 Ireland Drive Extension, 15 New York. Dish proposes to utilize the existing vacant Rad Center of 164 feet on the existing 180-foot tower. Please note there are multiple existing carriers on the 180-foot monopole and other carriers on the other existing tower. The height of the tower shall not be modified and shall remain as is. In addition, the existing fenced area of 50 by 100 feet should not be changed either. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter this evening. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for any questions in my car.
All right, thanks, Eric. This is yours.
Sure. This is a proposed site plan and a public hearing on a site that has existing two towers on it, one a lattice tower and a monopole, monopole. This is an additional new antenna array on the lattice tower on the site. We're recommending that the board proceed with an uncoordinated review, secret review for this, and that... that there are some issues, there's a couple of issues, uh, not huge ones, but, uh, we recommend the board take a look at the visual analysis and indicate if there's anything more that you want to see in the way of visual analysis. Staff's point of view, it seems to be fairly, to be reasonable.
Right.
Uh, we also recommend the board, uh, discuss the need, whether, uh, we assume that you would like the services of an RF consultant. There's a substantial amount of information, uh, that staff is not prepared to evaluate, and our previous RF consultant is not available, and, uh, we're in the process of obtaining another one. Um, and for that purpose, uh, we think that the board may want to defer action on the application in order to get a review, get review of the application by that consultant.
Yep.
I think that's pretty much it. There's a, so some pieces of information, uh, that would be helpful to have for the board to proceed. Um, we're documenting things for an approval, like there's trenching. It's a little unclear as to where the trenching is going, how far it is and what it involves. Um, out to Route 55, it may or may not, it may or may not trigger another permit from DOT or County Public Works. Probably not, but that's the reason for the uncoordinated review. Just in case it triggers something else, it won't hold things up.
Okay. Yeah, they gotta put some fiber in or something there. Uh, did, uh, so how close are we to getting this new RF consultant? Uh, like, should we defer, defer to January probably?
I, I would think January, my, um, the next town board meeting is December 7th. Um, my goal is to have, um, that on for the town board to, um, you know, authorize to be hired.
So imminent?
Yeah, but, uh, so I think if we went to January 19th, that would give them sufficient time to, uh, get on board and, and take a look at the application materials.
Okay, great. All right, um, uh, Andy, is there anything on this?
Yeah, we have, um, like Eric said, we had some comments about the proposed trenching and the potential need for a, a permit from the DOT or DPW. Um, everything else is related to the minor, um, amount of site work associated with the project, so, I mean, I think, nothing, nothing that we need to really talk about tonight.
Yep. I mean, it's an, it's an existing tower and it's, you know, just additional antenna just below the, uh, the top of that existing one. All right?
Yeah, I, I, I would actually like to say, as far as trenching goes, uh, we're currently looking into it with our, uh, architect engineer, Agda, and I will have all, uh, questions and, uh, answers for the questions in the following board meeting.
Okay. Yep, so you'll have all that information for the next time?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right, this is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hold on, before I open the public hearing, let's, uh, do the secret classification.
I move the planning board determine that it will conduct a secret, uncoordinated environmental review of the application as an unlisted action.
Second.
Moved and seconded for s- unlisted action. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, now, I, now open the public, and move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Uh, can you unshare your screen for a minute so we can see? Thanks. Anyone on the call tonight wish to comment on this project?
And if you're on the Zoom, you can just unmute yourself or wave frantically if you're, uh, not seeing any cell phones anymore, so, um...
Yeah, don't need to, don't need to star six.
Four of those people are on for this application.
Right, right, yeah. All right, there's gonna be another opportunity in January, so I, I move we adjourn the public hearing to January 19th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Go around the board for comments. Um, start with Peter this time. Ben?
Nicole?
Uh, I have a question. Uh, do you need to put any lighting on this or around this?
Uh, no, there's no, um, lighting proposed for this site.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't, wasn't sure if this tower was high enough that it needed any, it would be existing already, I guess, if it needed any FAA, uh, lighting. All right, uh, Ahmad?
No comment.
No comment.
Okay. Derek Picknick would like to add?
Visually, it seems, uh, seems good to me. Uh, it was, it's smaller antennas than the, than the existing array on the top of the tower. They're just positioned a little bit below that. I did have a question. Do you have any plans for a generator or battery backup in this, uh, facility?
Uh, not at this time, no.
All right, so if power goes out, this is, uh, offline?
Uh, no, there's a generator plug, so they can just bring in a generator and just plug it in there. There's a generator plug proposed.
Well, okay, so there's no onsite, no onsite storage of diesel or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Excellent. Um, I guess that's it, Ben?
I move the planning board defer action on this application, subject to the following: Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by planning departments as adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to, 1 through 8.
Second.
Moved and seconded, defer, call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, and, uh, you know, our, our RF consultant will be on board fairly soon, and we'll take a look at this and get through it as quick as we can. All right, thanks, everyone.
I would like to add, uh, for the record, Derek Picknick here.
What's that?
Uh, I would like to request you go through the secret process to obtain a negative declaration, and we're respectfully request to be continued until the next month's hearing in order, in order to obtain all of the items the board has requested. We're happy to ha- address any additional questions during the hearing. Lastly, I want to acknowledge that we are working with Dish to obtain and provide to the board all of the items you have identified and requested. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter this evening. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, take care. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay. Okay, next up, we have a couple of... Uh, next up is Eight Tucker Drive. I move we adjourn the public hearing to December 15th, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next up Arlington Farms. I move we adjourn the public hearing to January 19th, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. At this time, I move that we open, we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda and limit those comments to three minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone remaining on the call wish to comment on the remaining two agenda items? Seeing now, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, next up then is 1984 South Road, Site Restoration.
Yes, hi, this is Alexandra Carroll. I'll be representing, um, the applicant, which is Scheinberg LLC, and, um, this project, I can give you just a overall brief description as you're probably already aware. Um, the activity involves just the removal of CND, which has been deposited over the course of several decades at the property, um, and it was directed by court order.
Yep. Yep, you gave us a detailed description last time you were here, and that was, that was great. Thanks, um, Eric?
Sure. Uh, there's a seeker review and, uh, review for a land contour change permit, a major land contour change permit. Um, and the, there, uh, the last time the applicant was here, the board, uh, determined to circulate for lead agency. Um, it has been less than 30 days, but all of the potentially, potentially involved agencies have provided written consent, so that the board is free to con- proceed with the seeker review. Uh, the, we're recommending the application is ready for a conditioned, uh, permit approval. Uh, there is a bond security required for land contour permit, but it does not require the board to make a recommendation on it to the, uh, town board. Uh, it, it's in the recommendation tonight just as a condition of approval.
Okay.
They would arrange that with the town, uh, town attorney's office and the town board. Uh, there's a couple of minor comments. We've provided a resolution for your approval and a seeker negative declaration. Um, that's it?
Yep. All right, sounds straightforward. Uh, I'll start with Andy for his comments, and I'll go to Carol.
Yeah, so our comments have, have, um, pretty much been addressed. Uh, we had a few minor comments remaining regarding the, um, the stormwater calculations, which Alexandra was able to provide to me, um, uh, earlier this week, um, so that addresses that issue. Everything else, um, has been addressed. Um, we have the, with the, uh, you know, exception of, you know, obviously providing the restoration bond and signed and sealed documents, which can be, um, conditions of approval.
All right, thanks, Andy. Yeah, I know, they did a pretty good, they did a good job of, uh, all the details. Um, Carol, final comments on this?
No, I, I have no comment. It, it was, uh, very well documented, and as I said before, the, if, if then, if this is found, then we will do this, was, uh, definitely, uh, beneficial, so no, we don't have to go back to anything, so, I'm all set, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, uh, go on the board for any final comments. Ben, Peter?
No comment.
All?
No comment.
Steve? No comment?
Nope, nothing we, we had or say the last time you were here, and it's, uh, good to go ahead.
Okay. I move the planning board determine that the proposed 1984 South Road Site Restoration Land Contour Change Permit Application will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated November 20th, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the, the planning board grant conditional major land contour change permit approval subject to the following: Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included above, but not limited to the following 1 through 7.
Second.
Moved and seconded for conditional approval. Call to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, thanks, Hel- Alexandra. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you as well.
And good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
All right, one final big project. I'll go to, to Mike. It's the Poughkeepsie Bay School Acquisition and Development for Town Facilities discussion.
Okay, um, as I think everyone's aware, at this point, the town is looking to purchase, uh, or considering, town boards considering purchasing the Poughkeepsie Day School property, uh, for the purposes of, uh, ultimately moving the police and the courts there, and then eventually town hall offices, uh, to one consolidated campus. Um...
It was on the front page of the paper.
It was on the front page of the paper today. I did see that, yep. And actually, the, um, all of the information related to the town board study and everything else is now on the, uh, town website. Um, it's right under the news and announcements on the front page, so you can get to it very easily. Um, there's a lot of information there, but the, the bottom line is, um, uh, the town board is having a public hearing, uh, in December, uh, December 7th.
Yep.
Seven o'clock, right here at town hall, uh, to get any public comment on the acquisition and redevelopment of the campus. Um, there are two things that are being requested of the planning board at this point. One is, uh, the, the town board is intending to serve as a lead agency for the environmental review of the action under seeker, uh, which is pretty straightforward. Um, the other piece of this is, uh, related to, um, you know, it's an issue that comes up frequently when it's a public entity building a, a project like this. Um, are they, uh, actually, uh, do they have to go under their own rules, if you, if you will? Are they subject to the zoning? Um, you know, the, in this case, it is, the, the property is already an institutional zone, so it is properly zoned for, uh, for the use. Uh, but the town board, you know, rather than going through a formal site plan application process with, uh, that, with the planning board, uh, would like to basically take the lead on the review of the site plan when that time comes, um, you know, and, and work with the planning board to get, um, you know, feedback and, and suggestions along the way. Um, but that seems to be, uh, you know, a, a more straightforward path. Um, the planning board would have the opportunity to object to that if it wanted to, um, either tonight or at the, uh, public hearing on December 7th. Um, uh, my recommendation would be that, uh, you know, we work together on that, and, uh, and there's, not the language of emotion, but you could, you could indicate your agreement with that, uh, based on what I've written here in the staff room.
All right, I mean, it sounds, uh, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts in the, in this, uh, thing, and it's, it's a multi-year effort, I assume, as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of work that still has to be done. The, the study that's been done so far is really a feasibility study. It's, it's meant to, to show that, um, our offices, the, the police, the courts, at the whole, that, that we would be able to fit on the site and, uh, and make use of the site in a, in a way that would be advantageous. Um, and, and it's proved out, there's some cost estimates and so forth for the work, but the detailed level of construction and site plan and all that is still to come, so yes, they'll be...
Mike, one question, and maybe I missed a reading, is it lays out very much what the pound requirement is, but I don't see anywhere on the, the day school that it lays out the square footage by their buildings to make sure it matches up to this. I'm assuming someone's done that work.
It definitely, it definitely does, yeah.
It's about 200-page, uh, report on that, on this.
Yeah, you have the executive summary, um, but the, uh, the full report is available on the website now. It's, it's, it's extremely detailed. I mean, the, the architects went through, um, the, the buildings, uh, there's two buildings on the side, you know, very carefully to, to kind of give the town, uh, a very, you know, detailed understanding of the condition of the buildings. Uh, and there's a kind of preliminary layout for the different offices of the town, which was actually based, uh, in part on a, on an earlier study that we had done with the same team of architects that, uh, took a look at what our needs are space-wise. All right, so for each department, there was, uh, uh, some work done on, on identifying how much space they need, and then that was fitted into this site. So there, there's a lot of information in the full study.
Yep.
But not in the executive summary, yeah.
And it looks like you're trying to keep some of the recreation things, the soccer field that got put in place a few years ago and the ball fields.
Yep, the, uh, one of the nice things about this facility for the town would be that, uh, yes, the fields would, uh, remain, uh, and be able to be used for, you know, by the recreation department. There's also a theater in the school, the James Earl Jones Theater, which, uh, and, and there's a gym, including all facilities for the gym. Those would be available to be used, um, again, through the, probably through the rec department. Um, there's also a cafeteria with a full working kitchen, um, that could be used for a kind of another type of meeting or community event space.
Which building is it, S?
That's in the Gilkinson Building, the main school building.
Yeah.
So, uh, there's a lot of, um, things here that would be, you know, kind of add on, add, added benefits, benefits to the community, um, that I think, uh, make the project, uh, an exciting one.
So, right, so the project will take all these facilities, like this facility, move it up there, the, the one police station, the court down by...
That's correct. The, the police and the courts are currently located at Tucker Drive.
Right.
The priority is to get the, those offices moved, uh, because the condition of that building is not, not great. Um, this town hall building, of course, is not in terrible shape. Um, it does meet a lot of our needs, um, uh, but the idea would be, maybe, you know, to phase the redevelopment, basically move the police and the courts first, and then bring the town offices over, um, second.
And, uh, Arlington Fire also, or?
No, no, Arlington Fire is not involved in this. Um, the earlier study that we did in 2019 involved, uh, the town and Arlington Fire, uh, that, that was discussed, um, but for a variety of reasons, they were not ready to move forward, and we were, um, and so this is just the town offices.
So town, okay.
Yeah.
And what, what would become of this?
Well, the, the properties that the town currently owns at Tucker Drive and here would, uh, ultimately be sold. Um, so, right.
For?
For...
Development or whatever.
Right, right.
You're interested, right? For the right price!
Sounds like a...
A dollar?
Not a very knowledgeable question. What happened to the construction? When did that go away?
Oh, the.
No, they're still there.
They're still there.
So they would have to relocate if they were bought by us, by the town.
Their enrollment has gone way down in the past few years for some reason, uh, I don't know, everybody's not having kids, I don't know.
They're actively looking for a smaller location?
They are looking for a smaller location. Their intention is to continue. Um, they, uh, this is a pretty big facility, you know, the, for them now, based on their enrollment, and, uh, it's not really sustainable for them, so they've, you know, they are looking to sell it, um.
This building might be available.
This building might be available.
Okay, yeah, we wish them luck as well.
So if we could get a, a motion on the seeker, and then, uh, if you're comfortable also on the, uh, um, town board working as the lead on the site plan.
What is, yep, let's go around the board for any comments on that, Peter?
As long as there's a legal precedent for it, I don't have a problem.
Yep, which, uh, I did see, there was a, I don't know if, uh, you can explain that legal precedent, Lisa, just to clarify it for us?
Helps if you hit the right button. Yeah, actually, there used to be a distinction where they tried to decide if the municipality was acting in its, like, official capacity, or if it was gonna be a landlord, and they, the courts a few years ago got rid of that, and it's just a, basically, it allows the municipality, there's a number of factors to, to consider, but it allows the municipality to sort of act as its own, um, planning board in this instance, and it is, you know, commonly done when it's something that's for the town. The idea being that, you know, if there's, happened to be friction between the planning board and the town board, the town board should know what it wants in terms of its, um, needs, and be able to get there without, um, interference, so to speak. But there is definitely legal precedent for going in this manner.
And, uh, they would carry the same type of, uh, meetings for, that we have, for the public to have an input on?
Right, so, yeah, they'd have to hold public hearings as well.
They will, they will hold public hearings, um, yeah. Yeah, not, not, uh, in the same way that we do, but they, I mean, they're having a public hearing, first of all, on the acquisition. Um, each, each step of the way, there will be, there will be public input.
So there's forum for the community to place.
Yeah.
Their objection to the pla- to the building, how it's.
Yes.
They're gonna have, they're gonna, how it's gonna affect neighbors and all that.
Of course, it just changes or whatever, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else? Anything, Ben?
Let's go ahead and call.
No.
All right, in that case, I, I move that the planning board consented to town board serving as lead agency for the environmental review of this action under seeker.
Second.
Call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. And I move that the planning board agree that the town board should oversee the development and, uh, potential improvements to the Poughkeepsie Day School site for town facilities, and that such improvements should be exempt from local land use approvals, and that the planning board is willing to provide advice and other inputs to the town board as it prepares more detailed plans for those potential improvements.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, thanks Lisa. Anyone else, uh, have any other business before the board tonight?
I move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Glad to see that the town board.